Welcome to the August 18th, 2025 meeting of the Wazata Planning Commission. I hereby call the meeting to order. My name is Blake Cameron and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. The first item on our agenda tonight is roll call, actually the second item. Director Sharp, would you please call roll?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Ankeny. Commissioner Planton.
Here.
Commissioner Schwabey.
Here.
Commissioner Severson.
Here.
Commissioner Elg.
Here.
Commissioner Van Loy.
Here.
Chair Cameron.
Here. Thank you, Director Sharp. Next on the agenda tonight is approval of tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any questions or proposed changes to tonight's agenda? No. If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Planton, so.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second, Severson. Oh, again.
Thank you, both of you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion passes and the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from June 9th and June 16th. Does any commissioner have any questions or comments on any item on the consent agenda or wish to pull any agenda item for further discussion?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Severson.
On page 21, line 44, it just says your name. It just says Chair Cameron. That wanted to, needed to be corrected. Just noted for the record.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the amendment modified by, or the comment modified by Commissioner Severson? I can talk tonight.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Loy. May I have a second?
Second, Schwabey.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the motion passes and the consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is old business items, and there is none, so we'll roll right into the public hearing. We have one item on the public hearing tonight, which is, for public hearing tonight, which is a variance request for 547 Harrington Road for Lake Shore setback. So we'll start with the staff presentation. Is that you, Director Sharp, or you, Planner Hedblum?
Chair, I'll be taking this one.
Perfect.
We'll do a handoff very soon on a presentation coming up with an application you'll be familiar with. So thank you for the introduction. As stated, this is a Lake Shore setback variance application for 547 Harrington Road. The applicants are Ryan Hunt and Partners, and then the property owners will present in a little bit. Kyle. I know. That's why I paused. I didn't catch that, so thank you. That's where the pause came in. I wasn't sure if that was a name that slipped in that I hadn't seen on an application, so thank you for your patience. Project application is located on the west side of town. I chose to present with a slightly wider map for those who are unfamiliar of where this actual property might lie, as it's just a smaller single-family home. For greater context, this is on the west side of Harrington Road, on the south side of Ferndale Road, on the far western side of the community. Site is guided for estate single-family. It's our second-largest single-family guiding and zoning within the city. It is zoned for R1A low-density single-family estate district. The property also happens to be within the shoreline overlay zone, and this has some specific ramifications and particulars for this application. I'm going to go into a little bit more of those details later with specific code language that I will try to explain, and if commissioners have questions at the end of the presentation, would welcome them. But it is a central part of this application, that it is within the shoreline overlay. To remind the commission as to what that means, it means that the underlying R1A zoning district and all of its provisions still stand. The overlay, much as the name would entone, goes over the top, and additional requirements This application has been, per the applicant's narrative, we've tried to summarize these points. I would encourage, if you have specific questions about their purposes, to direct these to the applicant. They will be making a presentation or present this evening, so they'll be able to elaborate. But essentially, it was to aid in the future sale of this property at a future unknown date. The application does not include individual known proposed home details. And so that is different than what the commission may be familiar with. However, it is a valid application, so long as the request is clear and made to the city, and still is able to present an area that would then function within if a variance were to be granted. The stated purpose of this is that the applicant is stating, or is seeking to improve where that buildable area were to be if the existing home were to be removed. Again, additional details here to follow.
Can I ask a question? If you go back to the last slide, I'm sorry.
Certainly.
Is there any time limit in which that variance would expire? Like if you have to build within a certain period of time? Or is it just approved indefinite?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Severson, this is something that I wanted to look up. Traditionally, we have placed a condition that a variance be used, utilized within a year of the application. Within this, I would state that variances run with the land, first and foremost. However, there have been several conditions that have been added to variances that they must apply for a building permit or show interest within that. With this, a reasonable condition could be a timeframe if the planning commission so suggested. Otherwise, it could also be left more open-ended. It appears the city attorney would also like to make a comment regarding that.
Commissioner and Chair and Planner, actually, there is a code provision about a one-year requirement, so that might be what you're remembering, Commissioner. And it's a little confusing because, as Planner Sharp pointed out, we're dealing with two sections of code here, the R section and then the shoreline overlay. But the general criteria for a variance under 905 requires that physical, I'm just pulling up the language now, substantially stark construction of any building structure or alteration that's a part of the variance request. So in this case, I think if they were to receive a variance, they'd have to move on it within a year, under 90503A.
As a follow-up point to that, what we have seen is several applications have sought additional time that are granted typically on consent at a city council meeting if they are unable to meet that timeframe. Just as an example, in terms of how common that can be, particularly for larger applications that can take financing, we've done three since I've been here. I have not been with the city for a full six months yet, so it is not an uncommon practice to grant that extension. It would be a little bit more uncommon for a single-family lot, just due to the nature of typically they're bringing forward a project that gets held up at a building permit timeframe. So, little bit different context for you. So with the existing conditions, just to explain, very old home. It is existing on the lot. It is a legal lot of record, where the existing home on the property does not meet the required setbacks for the shoreline overlay. This is located on a prominent bend within Lake Minnetaka, so there is characteristics to the property that make it, simply due to its geography, slightly unique. And due to the age is where the nonconformity specifically comes in. So without wanting to contest the age, Hennepin County has one date in it. The homeowners have claimed that it's nearly 100 years old or around 100 years old. I'll let them elaborate on that. There may be substantial completion, large areas of additions, et cetera, but essentially what the commission would find important from this is that the existing home in its current location is likely a legal nonconforming before the zoning ordinance in shoreline was Before moving into the shoreline overlay and the nature of this actual application, I do want to highlight what the R1A setbacks actually require. These are met by the existing home. I also want to note just preemptively that they are pretty easily met by the proposed buildable area proposed by the applicant. So what applies with this application, and where this really starts getting into the nitty-gritty, and we'll go into a little bit more detail on a table later that helps simplify this, but the shoreline overlay zone requires that you meet the four provisions here in front of you. Either 75 feet from the ordinary high-water line, a line drawn between the two closest riparian structures, which is what this is, and when you'll see in the next slide, the average setback of the two closest riparian structures. And then what's confusing about this is that D doesn't add an additional piece to that, but helps to further clarify. In this case, we've provided this table to help explain the different setbacks and how they apply for this lot. When staff is reviewing an application for either a buildable area or a proposal, we would seek this information from an applicant. For this variance request, we saw the same information. So in this instance, the 75-foot setback is shown on the following survey, a 260-foot setback, which is that line drawn, and I will highlight that as well. And then the average setback between those two structures is 244. What this means for the site, and I should have tried to coordinate colors just a little bit better. Colorblindness is not my strong suit here. So what we have here is the yellow line, and that is our point-to-point, closest points, item B from code. This is the setback that is required on that lot. One of the things I've highlighted with that, and I wanted to just note for clarity, is it had been a point that had been asked about, is that sight line that's noted in the survey, it's included in your packet, technically is the required setback line. So wanted to note that on there to prevent, to ensure clarity. The average setback line of 244, that's the average setback between the lot to the south and the lot to the north, so the two single-family structures on either side. And then, as you can see, that 75-foot setback to the ordinary high-water line is far to the west. So these are the requirements and the analysis staff has done to determine essentially where the buildable area is, which is highlighted in green. So everything to the east towards Harrington Road is the buildable area under the most stringent of those three setbacks, which is what code requires. In this instance, the other piece that I wanted to share with this slide was that where their request then starts to come in. They made a specific request for 152.5-foot setback. I'll show that on another graphical slide. This is, again, trying to summarize the slide to follow, but it essentially shares what the new proposed setback would be, what their variance is, and what the requirement is. I've got some additional clarity we can add to that, but we'll see whether that's required out of any kind of discussion. So here's the similar slide with a couple of items removed. If there are questions, I do have some supplemental pieces to add to it if you need to, that highlight all those things, but I was trying to make things as simple as possible for the commission as I went through. The average setback line is still marked. The darker line that is the required setback is still shown. In this case, what the applicant is seeking is the 152.5-foot variance to shift where that line is towards the lake. And then, de facto, by their application, what they've kind of looked at doing is defining where that setback would be off of the ordinary high-water line, similar to how the other setbacks are set up. So that's the proposed setback of 108 feet. The total required setback at the point shown is 260.5. To illustrate that point just a little bit better, added this slide to show where that required setback would be, and then what the request is, is to use the 108-foot to allow for a setback in that larger area. It doesn't add substantially, but does add some. Wanted to further emphasize where buildable area was and where non-buildable area was graphically, and then kind of show on an aerial where the two connecting points are on the closest points of those structures. So rather than the survey, the commission and public could see it from an aerial, which may be easier for some to read. Additionally, as part of the applicant's request, they have voluntarily added some information to the slides. They were two sightline lines that are not required on the application, but did add some additional context. So they took lines from neighboring properties, extended these out onto this property, and created voluntary zones, the two red triangles you see here, in which they would self-restrict their building and remain out of. This would need to be a condition of approval if the planning commission and city council remove it forward, and likely a graphic would be added onto a resolution if this were to be ultimately approved. But it is something that could be added to further restrict and ensure that there are restrictions on those voluntary sightline areas. The green area shown on this would then be the proposed buildable area for the variance. As per standard practice, staff reached out to the engineering department and other departments within the city. There were no substantive comments. There were comments from neighboring property owners. These are attached in the packet. There have been none since the amended packet went out. Unfortunately, because I'm not used to receiving comments on an application before I have one in, we did amend the packet after it was originally released, as a comment had come in substantially before the actual application had been submitted. And so we amended the packet, and that did allow us to put all public comments received to date available for you this evening and out for the public in the packet. Rather than go through all of the wordy slides, there are some standards that the commission are familiar with, and then there are some that are a little bit less common, specific to the shoreline overlay. The commission will be well-familiar with these. You may see in the near future, as we're working with the advice of our city attorney, to less paraphrase these, but for the moment, we're moving forward with the practice the commission is aware of and comfortable with. These are, is the proposal consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is variance being sought a reasonable? Is the plight of the landowner due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by that landowner? Would the variance alter the essential character of the property and locality? And the economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. These are also pulled straight from state statute, so these are consistent with all cities across Minnesota. The additional criteria are pulled straight from code, and they're here for your reference, they're included in your packet on one of the final pages, I think second to last page for your reference, as you are deliberating. I will do my best to summarize these verbally so that we can move through a little bit faster. But the minimum setback is from the ordinary high-water mark, and it must be 75 feet, or I'm sorry, let me state that more clearly. The minimum setback from the ordinary high-water mark must be 75 feet. The setback shall not adversely impact views of the shoreline or lake for adjacent neighboring principal structures. As a reminder, a principal structure would be the home, not a shed, or pool, or deck, or boat structure, or et cetera. And then the reduction of that setback is based upon the specific need or circumstance unique to the property. In items D and E, just to add some clarity, D is a plan that usually comes in at the time of building permit. We have proposed already preemptively in your staff report to make that a condition of approval, should the commission seek to recommend approval going forward. And then Section E is likely an item that will end up on the list to speak with our city attorney about, as it refers to the standard variance provisions that we've already shared with you, and Section, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I get it, yep, 905, and then 991.20 happens to be this section. So it's essentially stating that it has to follow the rules of the shoreline overlay This evening, what we're seeking from action for the planning commission is to hold the public hearing, receive all public comments, close the public hearing, and then direct staff to prepare a draft planning commission report and recommendation with appropriate findings. With that, I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also present for a presentation as well.
Commissioners, anybody have questions for Director Sharp? Staff? Yes. Mr. Schwabey.
So this house was built in 1929. And then the house to the north was built in 1976, and the house to the south in 2016. So the house to the north, which I think influences this whole thing quite a bit, had to be moved back far, how many feet was it, almost 300 feet, to accommodate the fact that there is a marshy area in front of the lake for them. So that set one of the parameters. Am I right about that?
That is all correct, Commissioner.
Okay. And then the property to the south, which is 549, it is setback 189 feet. Is that right?
I would want to check a slide that we've created to verify that, but we, I think we included that in your packet, yes.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to ask you, he could have, he could have built that home at 75 feet. Is that correct? Did he have a choice there, or was he required to be at 189 feet?
The home would have needed to meet the home to the south, just to make sure you're correct, or that I'm speaking to the correct property, correct?
Can you please say that again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, not a problem. So you're referring to the 549 Harrington Road?
Yes.
Okay. 549 Harrington would be required to meet the same provisions as 547, so it would be subject to the greatest of the three setbacks similar to this property. In fact, so it likely could not have gone any closer than its current setback.
Because of 553.
Because of both adjacent properties, but 553 being one of them. So it would have needed to meet the line drawn between those two points. It would have needed to meet the average, and clearly it meets the 75. So I suspect with that home that it meets the closest point drawn between the two, and likely, to some degree, benefited from 547 being closer to the lake than the home to the south.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Do you know if this riparian issue came up at the time that 549 was built?
Chair, Commissioner Schwabey, this would have been, because a variance was not sought for, it would have been a staff review item that would have been required at the time of building permit. If it had been a variance, the planning commission would have seen it, the city council.
So it didn't require a variance?
No, it would not have required a variance to build that. It would have been a review at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have just one clarification to make sure that I understand. So if this variance isn't granted, and somebody wanted to remodel that house, possibly with an addition, they would need to get a variance because of the setback rules, correct?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Van Loy, you asked two questions there, so I'm going to split them apart. They could model, remodel the existing home and not increase any of the nonconformities by this existing footprint, no additional height, not closer, essentially no additional square footage even closer to Harrington Road, because it still wouldn't meet the required setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
You said add an addition, that would trigger the need for a variance.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question.
Mr. Schwabey.
Okay. So if we go by those lines that you showed us earlier, the site or the closest point setback, it, there's not a lot of building area behind those lines. Do you have, do you have any thoughts about how big of a house could go there, given?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, based upon some of the materials submitted a little bit later, but also visual inspection of this property, there's a significant encumbrance to staying within the green shaded area on the graphic in front of you. It is difficult to state from a staff role what then an appropriate variance might be, whether that be what the applicant has asked for or somewhere in between. That is where staff would note that this is a pretty significant encumbrance, and have tried to show that through the application, and then essentially seek input from planning commission and council, as that really falls into your category of the evaluating and making a judgment on the provisions of a variance that are standard throughout and those that apply only to shoreline. So there's certainly a significant number of tree disruptions. There's also grade issues that the applicant, I think, will be able to highlight within the area that's green. So does that help address your question?
Could I ask one more quick one?
Of course.
Okay. If the property to the north does not have an objection to 108 feet, does it change this at all? Because that person doesn't care if their sightline is changed?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, the commission shall utilize adjacent comments. We mail out to all properties within 500 feet, but it is a judgment call on your part which properties may, how you utilize the information provided by those. The one item that I would note is that one of the comments included in your packet was from the property to the north.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, can I just?
Mr. Severson.
Please. So this closest point setback, this is done for sightline reasons, not Lake Minnetaka being too close to the lake reasons? Is that what I'm understanding?
The intent of this particular measurement is not specifically called out. All three are called out under the intent of the shoreline overlay, which is to preserve the Minnetaka shoreline for sightline reasons, for all of that. My read is that it is largely due to sightlines, however, that is an interpretation. The overall intent of the shoreline chapter is, does not cite this individual section as to how it needs to be evaluated. Shoreland does include specific provisions for setbacks, which is those provisions you saw in your additional ones the commission hasn't worked through as commonly. But we do have a number of cases that we included in the packet that you've gone through and highlighted which ones were similar, and have that information available should there be any questions on them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Well, then we will, next, we're going to hear from the applicant. So applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself, and provide your name and address for the record, and your role on the applicant's team, I guess, which we know.
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. My name is Kyle Hunt. I am with Kyle Hunt and Partners. I am a builder on an everyday basis for the last 35 years, but in this case, I'm acting as a consultant for the owners, the Swanson family, who are here this evening, who live at, two of them live anyway, at 547 Harrington Road. My address, office address is 18324 Minnetaka Boulevard in Deep Haven. Do you need my home address for any reason? Okay.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to be here, and thank you, Alex, for your work on this and your explanation. Any questions that I should be thinking about right off the bat, or should I just start in?
I would just roll right in, and we will cue some questions up and hit you at the end when you're, after you're done.
All right. I do want to plant one question.
I checked that. Mr. Van Loy has a question.
Be sure to share with us how you landed at 108 feet.
Okay.
Why that, why that specific distance was selected.
Okay. I will try to get there. That was, so, many of these slides that I'm going to show are maybe things that you already are aware of, so I don't want to read this out loud. I think much of it might be review, but I do want to allow you to look at the slide, and if you want to acknowledge that I should roll to the next, I'm happy to do that. Some of them I'm going to be speaking to extensively. Can you hear me fine? I'm, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good with the? Good with the, with that first slide? Okay. This is a copy of the survey. This is very similar to, or maybe even the same, of what Alex presented. It's just giving the basic understanding of the 75-foot setback, what we were proposing as the 108, based on the 152.4 being really a measurement that happened in the middle, because Alex had wanted a measurement so that we could establish something, even though the, the line is skewed, it will cause the north half to be different size than the south half. It's harder to read on the survey. I've, we've tried to use better depictions by superimposing various aspects of what you can get online now, these days, to represent this. This slide essentially talks about the yellow line that's furthest to the right in your viewing of this. That is the line that we're speaking about, that is the code setback based on 991.09. And so this representation of that just kind of gives you an idea. Here's where 75-foot setback is, and then the 108 was really established by just an idea of all of us, the family members, giving some input to how, how we thought about this home being here for, it, it may have been remodeled in 1929, but it's, it has a pre-life to that, so it's, it's been, been there for a long time. And as you, you'll notice in some of the other slides, and what Alex pointed out, there is a prominent bend. You can call it a point, I suppose, but somebody, somebody might try to. But this makes this turn, and if you look at how, in one of the other slides that I'm going to present, you'll look at how these lines start to make some representative order. And so we'll get to that here in a moment. This is a slide two that essentially gives you the buildable and non-buildable area, but just want to kind of hit the bullet points, and maybe you guys have read all of this, but I'll, I'll just talk about it. Dick and Elaine Swanson are here this evening. They've lived at 547 for over 45 years. They're at a stage in their life where they're recognizing they need to think about making a change, and so they're looking at selling the property, and we are caught with the quandary of chicken and egg. How do we look at selling the property at the same time? How does a, how does a buyer recognize, what are they buying? So one could make the argument, which I'm sure we'll hear tonight, that we should be bringing an exact plan. Well, that may not happen and could not happen at the present time. And so we're here with a request that might be considered somewhat unorthodox, but I've seen it done in other cities many times. So I don't think you're being presented with something that's overly awkward. The, the aspect of what we're trying to accomplish with this is to show that the line that you're seeing on, the yellow line on this, connecting the two neighboring properties, recognizing that the property at 543, which is to the north, had to build, the topography isn't really known or shown here, but the topography, if you've visited the site, is dramatically different. That home sits up on a knob, if you will, and falls off pretty quickly in the woods that you see that is between the home and the marsh area, which is really kind of this open green area. Craig Swanson is here this evening too, and he remembers growing up, and you correct me if this is a wrong story, Craig remembers that at one point in time when that area wasn't being, it's being pumped right now. I mean, the city has a pump that basically brings water out of that marsh area so that it's not flooded, but that was ice skating capable when they were growing up. Just to give you some sense of how marshy that might be. So it's, it's a non-buildable area, even for the neighbors, and what we want to try to recognize is that although this code is in place, I'm sure when it was put in place, it was maybe to direct some unneighborly conduct. I'm only guessing. And then, because I've seen this in other parts of the lake, and it's really the only other place that it is, is in Orona. Everyone else has dismissed this, because if you look at this, in 100 years, you're going to march everybody back to the street if you make them fulfill this obligation time and time again, as, as properties get modified and progress keeps going. So I, I would say, Alex and I were talking, I would say that you, this would, this would be a good code to relook at. Orona is relooking at it as we speak. I'll go on to the next slide. This just gives you a little bit more information, looking through at the properties. I won't read all of that. I think you've had that in your packet. I'll let you consume that, and there'll be questions along the way. This slide, I think, tells the greatest story of what is happening in a couple of situations just on Harrington Road and on, in this case, this prominent bend in the shoreline, as well as Lookout Point, which is on your far right. You can see, we've applied this yellow line just basically saying, that's the yellow line that we're following, and Alex, correct me, is B is the portion we're looking at, where we're, we're looking at the two neighboring riparian properties, and we're striking a line from closest to the lake to closest to the lake. And so when you look at this, it's a configuration of all of that, if you were to apply it, one property after another. And so the neighbor at 549 was able to take advantage of the Swanson's location when they built their home in 2016 and 17, when it was under construction. They were able to build closer to the lake because of how the Swanson home is positioned. If you, if you look at some of the possibilities of what that could have been, it could be dramatically different. And if we move ourselves down to Lookout Point, just a handful of years ago, this situation similar or almost exactly the same is what we're looking at here. I don't know if any of you members were involved in the variance that was achieved for the owner at Lookout Point, but they had, you can see, their yellow line basically took the lion's share of the lot and left a little neck portion. If you just think of just to the north, if you can see those property lines, probably would have been better to have a little bit different color there. But essentially, the lot would have been deemed unbuildable. And they received, I don't know how that went through planning commission, but they received a five to zero vote in favor of a variance for how that house is positioned now. And you can see the neighbors, even the neighbor to the north and slightly east, their, their line cuts off part of their property as well as the next neighboring property to the north. A good chunk of their home is outside of that. But to note here is that the variance was granted for that property, and you can see how similar the situation might be here, right? Even though that prominent bend may not be considered a point, it's acting like a point in how this whole aspect works. So when we move, this is just a little honing in on what happened down at Lookout Point. You can just see it in a little bit more closer proximity. Just helps give you a little bit more of a visual. But that property, not only the original structure, or excuse me, not original, the proposed structure, which is in red, there is a boathouse, if you will, that was, was left intact. And I guess with Wazeta, that probably can be that way, because they have a boathouse. They allow boathouses, which I think you're the only ones on the lake that do. I applaud you for. So I think Alex has explained this just as well as this slide does, what we're looking for in the variance. Commissioner Elgin, did I answer enough on how we got to the 108? It was pretty vague. It was not vague, but it was, it was based on just the understanding of where, where are we improving on the setback, moving it away from the lake? Where are we likely not to remove significant, more significant trees? Where does the topography help us gain the best position? Where is it still out of sight with the neighbors in the context of how I believe the code reads? All of those things were considered. And I, I want you to remember that the other restrictive factor that's going to come into play, that ultimately will help decide position, size, et cetera, of a home is the impervious service, surface coverage, which will be at 25%. And we are currently at 21.08% with the current home, driveways, walkways, anything that had hard cover, we've collected so that you can see that this home, or this property is under the regulation, but it leaves you with four, around 4%, but you get to shuffle the deck on how you want your 25% to be allocated. But that is going to restrict how that possible building envelope could be utilized. And I've got another slide at some point here that will help us with that. We believe that this variance is in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the ordinance, and our reasoning behind that is right there, and we are improving the setback. The variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We feel it falls within that. There's the anomaly of having the neighbor and to the north, and the marsh land imposes that line to be radically different than all of the properties you just saw in that other slide. How do I play that video? It's in, I have to click somehow on that picture. Yes, this is, there you go. Okay, so we, we had a drone shot. So there, there is a, can we pause it, or is there any way to pause at times? Maybe? Okay, I'm sorry. I can't control that, right? Okay. I just want to point out a couple of things. There is an arborvitae hedge that you see behind the larger maple, which is essentially the, just the trunk, the big trunk that you see is a, is a maple tree. And beyond that is a arborvitae hedge that the owners of 549 have planted as part of their landscaping efforts at the end of construction. It's there. It's been planted by them for visual purposes. We'll hear otherwise. But that, it's there, and what I want to point out here is we're going to show you some shots. It's a little herky and jerky, because that's how things go these days with how the drones work evidently. But I'm, if you can notice on the right-hand side, where the chimney kind of goes up and into the white space of the, above the slide, that corner where there's a downspout, you're going to notice in a picture. So I want you to understand the drone shot is up at that elevation, which is at the fascia line, which would be where the gutter is, at the second story of, of the Swanson's home, as it's currently built. So if you want to run that for a second, you'll kind of see, we're going to, so there's the hedge, and there is us turning back towards the Swanson house. And then we're going to go, and we're going to hover that, at that second floor elevation, and we're going to look towards the neighboring property at 549. And we really can't see their house, can't see their patio, we can't see much of anything. And the reasoning I put this here is that is this further restrictive line that we have put ourselves under voluntarily to help understand that we are looking to honor the neighbors' visual at 549 and at 543. So hopefully that helps depict what we're looking for there. I guess I can control that. This is another, I think, helpful slide. It basically gives many of the different pieces and parts to what we're talking about. Again, that white line that reaches from property, neighboring property to neighboring property is the line that we're speaking of. The yellow area that has kind of this, the yellow shading up to that line is our proposed building envelope that we would like to be able to construct in. And you can see it is not impinging on 549, which would be to the, in this slide, it would be the lower property, into their visual area from the home. You're going to see, just like if you stood out on their patio now, you could see the Swanson home possibly, and you're going to for sure see the U-line home that is being constructed to the south. Do I have my directions correct? Any questions, or, again, I'm not going to read this to you, because I feel like you guys have all of this in your packet and have, have looked at that. And I'm willing to back up on any of these, of course. The practical difficulties here are not related to economic considerations alone. I think everything that I just showed on the slide presentation warrants that. The reason for this variance request is not related to economic conditions alone. Will they have an impact on it? Absolutely. With, no one's, no one's saying that they will or they won't on that. I mean, they will. The practical difficulties are all related to the unique aspects of how this property is on the bend in the lakeshore and on the idea that the neighboring property is setback so far from the lake that it's an anomaly that I don't think this code would, thought of when it was put in place. All right, I just want to, before I walk into these slides, make sure I'm in my right spot, if you don't mind me taking a moment?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, bear with me here just a moment, because I'm now going to read, which I don't really like doing. All right, you're going to hear from the owners' council later tonight that they would have you believe the landscape in place is of no importance to this situation. The reference that they make in their statement about the kitchen window view from Cosentino's, which is 549, to the Swanson's nearest windows at 547, I just want you to recognize, they're, what they're describing is window to window approximately 170 feet apart currently. The owners at 549 took advantage of the non-conforming setback of the Swanson's home, 547. When they stated their new home, when they cited their new When they stated their new home, when they cited their new home at 549, it was under the pretense of knowing that this was a non-conformity and they ended up taking advantage of it. I think it's rather bold of them to now say that they're going to speak against the Swansons and use the aspect of this merit against them. I just think it doesn't make logical sense. The owner of 549's attorney points out in his narrative that Sections 991.01 of the code and 901.03 list to maintain and preserve property values is the general purpose of the intent of the ordinance. If this is so, then it cannot be used as a manner, in the manner that would not maintain or preserve the property values of the Swanson property. I have to believe this use was never intended when first written. It was intended to help, not harm. In this situation, with all the unique factors, it is inflicting harm. The owner of 549's attorney would have you believe that the economic considerations are the sole motivation for this variance. This is false statement. You've seen what is considered in front of you. That is not the sole motivation. The city of Wayzata and Hennepin County have been assessing 547, the Swanson's property, under the pretense that the property is being used for its highest and best use for decades. To not allow relief from this obvious anomaly would break the bond of highest and best use. Any future owner would be harmed if, and the maintenance to maintain and the preservation of the property value of the Swanson, of Swansons, if it was not properly addressed. So I want you to consider those points when you review what's coming after me in my presentation. I'm near the end here. I want to go back to slide six, if I can figure that out. Can you tell me when I'm at six? I don't have the numbering here.
You're at six.
There. So I just want everyone to see where you see the 547 out in the water at the subject property that we're talking about. You can see this prominent bend in that. And that gives you some sense of looking to the south. All of the homes are facing out onto, I'm going to say, more of the main lake, right? Because Brown's Bay is off to the west, and this is, their views are a bit more southerly. So they're all trying to take advantage of their best views, and they're running typically parallel with the shoreline, if you noticed that. And so we get to this bend as we move around towards 547, and it's going to be an obvious conclusion that whoever ends up doing something on this property in the future is going to do what whoever originally came up with the idea of citing where the Swanson home was cited, they are going to follow suit and run parallel with the shoreline that is out in front of 547, which is significantly different than the shoreline in front of the rest of them. So there's going to be this bend, and I think when you strike a line, if you were to strike a line from the home that is now built and received a variance at lookout point, and you strike a line right on down to the Swanson house, you can see it, even in your mind's eye, I should have probably struck a line there, but in any case, you can see that it's consistent. And even the Swanson home hits that consistency. Now, 543 to the north, Joanne Leavenworth's property, who has written a lovely letter supporting what the Swansons want to do. She has been there for many, many years as well. And because of tree locations and so forth, I didn't even bother to show a slide on what you can see back from Swanson's house to her house because you can't. It's all trees. So I wanted to just end on the idea that we just feel it's reasonable to conclude that a variance, if a variance was granted at lookout point for a very similar, if not the same, scenario, it seems reasonable to consider that in similarity to a vote for this application. Open to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or follow-up questions for staff?
This might be something that staff doesn't know, but if we would provide this variance at 108 to 547, would that put 549 into a non-conforming state so that they would require a variance if they did in addition? Or, God forbid, something happened to that house and they had to rebuild?
Commissioner, can you restate the beginning of that if you were to use?
So if we provide, if we grant this variance to 547 for the Swansons and a house is built there, because now that house is 10 feet or more back, is 549 non-conforming?
Chair, Commissioner, good question. I understand it. I'm trying to make sure that I can answer it accurately and not definitively state something that I can't document 100% here. There's a potential that I'd like to bring up.
Be a triangulation would be?
Yes, I want to bring up my presentation because I've got an aerial that the orientation is correct that'll help. So this is about as close of an aerial as we have of these two sites, but we can try to bring one up if you want to drop one into the folder for me. The property at 549 Harrington is oriented from north-south at a slight angle with its closest point being on the northern side. There's the potential that by dropping this line back, that there is a portion of that home that could become within the non-conformity. Because that is a line, there's likely a section that is retained as well. I wouldn't be able to state definitively that they are right up against that setback line. They may have built with some level of leeway built into that, but it is the widest part of the home and the closest portion of the loan, closest portion of the home to the lake in terms of its orientation. We're going to see if we can drop an aerial in just for you to be able to see that at a little bit higher zoom-in value.
That'd be helpful, thank you. And certainly, if further back, anything would be built on 547, that would bring this situation more to fruition in terms of 549 being non-conforming, correct?
Chair, Commissioner, the further back that 547 would be built, the more non-conformity that could affect any future. Now, to address one piece of your question, they could do remodeling with an existing footprint. They have quite a bit of rights for an existing home. I'm going to grab that photo and bring that up for you to be able to see as well.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I do have a copy of the survey for 549, and this is only me speaking after seeing it. I don't have it with me, but it's at my office. And they brought the home right up to the line currently, just for reference. I mean, to help with your question, Commissioner Van Loy.
Thank you.
Chair, Commissioner, this shows it prominently that the, prominently is probably the incorrect word. There is a orientation of the house where it angles slightly closer. However, here's where I don't want to answer definitively, and I'm glad that we were able to look. The land also extends out in that section. So there's a unique circumstance there that is the possibility that I don't want to, it's why I was hesitant to answer definitively. We would need to look at the site survey and do a full site review, similar to how we would with this proposal, to fully determine effects.
Understand, thank you.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant or staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Yeah, one last comment.
Sure.
Commissioner Van Loy, your representative example shows you exactly how, if this marches forward over time with this kind of an ordinance, how you keep marching back to the point where everyone's going to be pushed up against the road over time. It may not be, may not be in our lifetimes or even in our children's lifetime, but sometime, if this is left the way it is, that's what's going to happen, and someone's going to go, "Stop. That doesn't make sense." Just my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. So now I'd like to turn to the public hearing. Couple of comments on the public hearing. The public hearing is a time for us to listen to members of the community about the requests we are considering. It's an important part of the process to give the public a voice and a venue to participate. Any questions asked during the public hearing will be held until the end of the hearing and may be addressed at staff by staff at that point. So with that said, I will now open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Christopher Pearson. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Sanford, Pearson, Thon &amp; Streen here in Wayzata, 1905 East Wayzata Boulevard, Suite 200, 55391. I represent Dan and Stacy Cosentino, the owners of 549 Harrington Road, as we've seen the property to the south. Can I just get a little clarification? I was told a little while ago that we had three to five minutes. I'm hoping that in light of the robust discussion so far, maybe I can have a bit more than that, but...
We generally try to limit the public comments to three to five minutes.
All right, I will see what I can do. I will edit on the fly.
Perfect.
So the Cosentinos are unable to attend tonight due to a longstanding family commitment. They did hope to be here but are not able to. Also, I will be here on their behalf. We've submitted fairly extensive writ materials, and I believe those are in your packet. The renderings that you'll see tonight were generated by the Mohagan Hansen Architectural Firm here in Wayzata. Actually, I think they're just across the border into Minnetoka over on Wayzata Boulevard. My plan was to make five points. In light of the time, I may make only three. So, I need the clicker. There we go. We'll skip this one. Those are the five points, and we'll go jump right into it. The first point I want to make has to do with Section 99109D3 of the code. This is the operative and controlling section at work here. I'm going to take the time to read it to you because I think it's very important that we understand exactly what it says. The required setback distance may be reduced by variance if the following conditions are met. And then it lists five, lists five conditions. One of those conditions is that the setback shall not adversely impact views of the shoreline or lake for adjacent neighboring principal structures. Now, my reading of that statute is you have to satisfy each of those five conditions. It says if the following conditions are met. So if we don't satisfy B, we don't have to worry about all the rest of that stuff, all the balancing of factors and the whole 905 analysis. So to me, the key question is, does this proposed variance, will it likely affect the views adversely of, in my case, the Cosentinos or the Leavenworths who weren't here? So let me go here. This is the view from the kitchen door of the Cosentino's property. Now, does it impact the view? Let me go, let me, first note, the white structure, the white area you see on the left there, that is the area in which a structure could be built, given the setbacks that are being sought, okay? That's a 35-foot structure as allowed by the code. So that's from the front door. This is a little bit out on the patio, okay? I don't think there's much question that this is impairing, adversely impacting the views of the Sorrentinos of the lakeshore of Lake Minnetoka. Now, if I can make a request, can we go back to slide six in Mr. Hunt's presentation? Because a big deal was made out of the fact that if that line, the setback line running along the south here continued, then what they're proposing would be just fine. But that disregards the whole idea that the bend in the shoreline actually takes place right there. So if an equivalent setback were imposed, it would be behind the Swanson house, the red house. It would bend with the shoreline. All right, enough of that. Let's, let me go back to my materials. All right, so in my book, that view, those renderings mean that the proposed variance does not satisfy Part B of the ordinance, and therefore, the variance cannot be granted. That's the plain reading of the statute. That's what it says. All right. Now, on the off chance that you don't think that's controlling, or as controlling as I do, let me switch to another point. And this is a simple point, and I think, I think Mr. Hunt mentioned it. That is, that approving this variance would be inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance by hurting the value of the Cosentino property. Section 90501 allows granting of such variances only when the variances are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of this ordinance. And as he mentioned, code sections 99101 stating the purposes of Chapter 991 and 90103 stating the intent of Part 9 of the code list maintaining or preserving property values as a general purpose or intent of the ordinance. Now, I understand his argument that goes both ways.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
The purpose of this public hearing isn't to rebut the commentary of Mr. Hunt. It's to just provide commentary. I understand you're representing your clients, but I'd like to understand from your client's perspective, their concerns, not the rebuttal to Mr. Hunt's comments.
Very well. But this point was that we are considering the intent and the purpose of the ordinance, My third point is the economic considerations issue, okay? Economic considerations alone cannot constitute practical difficulties. That's the language of the code. Now, I want to, the phrase "call a spade a spade" comes to mind. The owners want to be able to market the property to people who will want to tear down the existing home and build a new one. And having a variance in place like the one sought would make it easier to sell the property and sell it for more. I get that, I understand it, I don't fault them for trying. And I also understand, you know, claims like it'll be simpler and less expensive for a new buyer if this variance is already in place. And it's difficult to agree on a sale price if you don't know the buildable area. And who's going to pay all the design and engineering fees if the buyer can't get all approvals needed? But those are all economic considerations. I don't see any non-economic considerations here. The idea that motivating concern is a reasonable use of the property for a future owner... The idea that motivating concern is a reasonable use of the property for a future owner, it doesn't hold water. There are all sorts of purchase agreements entered into every day that are contingent on getting certain approvals, or changing the purchase price based on the size of a buildable area. Any prospective owner of this lot should go through the development process, just like any other prospective owner of any other lot. Why treat this lot differently? This reasonable use of the property for a future owner, in my mind, is just another way of saying that without this variance, we can't market the property as effectively as we could with the variance. I believe economic considerations alone drive this application. Now, next point. There isn't a need for the variance as large as the one sought, and this is, this is why we say that. If you look at the buildable area proposed by the applicant, the proposed building area is essentially everything colored up there. Well, let me go there, let's go here. Now, I'm going to go back, all right? The yellow area, as it would be without the white overlay, the structure, is their proposed buildable area, okay? So it's 108 feet from the high-water mark and 20-foot side setbacks. If we go here, what we show is, if you consider a different, a hypothetical buildable area that is pulled back from the west to the east at the lakeshore, to a point defined by the yellow, or the red line on the left of the yellow area, that line is defined by two points. And those two points are the intersection of the sightline to the Leavenworth property to the north, with the 20-foot existing setback variance, and the sightline of the Cosentino property, the sightline where it intersects that same 20-foot setback on the south. If you were to draw a line there, in anticipation of a question, Commissioner Van Loy, that's the rationale. It's further back, and it, but there's no magic necessarily in that particular line, other than the fact that if we trim that by that additional setback from the lakeshore, and we take a little more up from the setback on the south side, then, and there, that's what, that's what it would be, in that case, that green structure is one of the proposed houses that was in the applicant's packet, their application, of a house that could be built, or couldn't be built without the variance. But, if you see, if you take that green structure and move, slide it back slightly to the east and slightly to the south, it clearly fits in this much smaller buildable area. So the idea that we have to have this setback way out of the 108 feet is questionable at best.
Give you 30 more seconds to wrap it up.
Okay, well, the point of that is, you could build a very lovely, very large house in this much smaller area. So, to close, I think, to me, I think the biggest issue is that this is, is how far this varies from the typical development process. Where are the construction plans? Where are the grading plans? Where are the hardcover calculations? What are the elevations? The Cosentinos are essentially being asked to consent or not object to something that they don't know what it is. What is going to be built in this variance? Isn't a variance a function of what's going to be built in it, what it's going to be used for? You know, in the development world, these things are dealt with all the time by purchase agreements that are contingent, and have upscales for, or upgrades if you can get a larger buildable area. And, finally, to me, development is a process, and this is a variation from that process. We should be pushing hard to find out what's going to be in this buildable area. And if it's, we all know that if this is approved, the city is going to be asked again and again in the future to do the same thing, which leads to development by piecemeal, and which maybe won't be done by people as honorable as Mr. Hunt and Mr. Swanson. So, with that, I will conclude, I'm happy to answer any questions. I ask that this presentation and my materials be made part of the minutes, and thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Sure.
I do have a question, Mr. Pearson.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in this rendering number five, I want to make sure I'm reading it right, are you suggesting a variance of 114 feet rather than 108?
Thanks for the question. I would like to address this. It is not the job of the Cosentinos, or my job, tonight, or anywhere in this process, to essentially make a counteroffer to what is proposed, okay? We're saying, that's a hypothetical line further back that would accommodate at least one and maybe more of the possible houses that were submitted.
That's, I'm going to stop you right there, because that's out of scope anyways for this, because what they've asked for is 152, and so our job is to decide whether we recommend approval of that 152, or recommend denial. There's, there's no other, there's no other measurement that's under consideration tonight other than what they've asked.
I thought that's what I was saying, they were, they've asked for 108 feet of a front setback, lakeshore setback.
Yeah, sorry, 108, whatever, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Help me out.
So what I'm saying is, we're not here to propose something.
No.
We just, we think there's something less than 100 feet that would, that would suffice. And I would like to add, if it's all right, the Cosentinos are not out to make this lot unbuildable. That's not their goal here. They understand that there will probably be some variance granted because circumstances merit it. They just think this one is a step too far, and they would like to see the development process play out and be complete, so they're not being asked to consent or assent to a variance without knowing, in a vacuum, without knowing what's going to go in it.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anyone else? Awesome. Director Sharp, do we have anybody on teams with any comments or questions? Or anybody, I'm sorry, anybody would like to speak? Perfect. Yeah, please step forward, step up to the podium and introduce yourself, and state your name and address for the record.
Excuse me, Dick Swanson, I live at the moment at 547 Harrington Road, and a lot of this discussion is above my pay grade, so I'm not quite sure I understand at all. However, that being said, the one thing I did want to encourage is all of the council members, Blank Commission members, to come out, and I'd be glad to meet with them if they'd like, and view the site, because you cannot begin to understand what we're talking about here from a survey. For instance, the part of the land that some of our folks at the opposition, I guess, would like to see on is probably, I can't imagine anybody would ever build down there, it's below our driveway down below, and you know, part of the land. So, we have stakes, we have staked out the variance line, so it's very, you could come out and see the house, you can see it, and with a couple of folks in the past, I've walked them over to Cosentino's and stood at their viewpoint, which is their inside swimming pool, and looked along our line on the variance request, and you can't see anything of our house. So, we have agonized over drawing those lines as tight as they are, and we think we've done more than enough to observe all of the niceties of being neighbors, good residents of Wayzata. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
Chair, at this time, there's no one wishing to speak on teams.
Cool. Anybody else present that would like to speak? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any, any additional questions for staff or the applicant at this point, or any questions that were raised during the public hearing that you'd like staff to address?
I have one.
Commissioner Schwabey.
So, there is not another opportunity that the Cosentinos would have to see the plan, to see the final drawing, presentation of what, of what this new building would be like?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, there would be an opportunity, if they would like to come into City Hall, to view plans during a building permit project. However, at that time, if a plan met all building codes, all zoning codes, it would be allowed to be, or permitted to move forward.
Including if we recommend...
Or any conditions as recommended, and that's approved and immortalized within the resolution, essentially. So it would need to be subject to all of those pieces, they would have the availability to view them. Traditionally, architectural plans are copyrighted materials and cannot be sent out, they must be viewed here on-site and are made available by staff.
Okay, thank you.
And that wouldn't include if they come forward and ask for additional variances, correct, right? So, the new homeowners or the new landowners say, "Well, this doesn't meet what I need," or "It's not enough," or "I need something else," and they would still have to come back here, and at that point, building plans would be available, my understanding?
Chair Cameron.
Potentially the same situation.
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Sieversen, correct. Any additional variances, they would need to be able to provide whatever plans were required to review that variance to the Planning Commission, and those then would be public documents that could be shared on the website, similar to this application or any other application.
I have a question for staff. Do we have a topography plan or anything to see how that drops off? I know the property, the Leavenworths to the north, it drops off quite severely.
There was one in here that had...
Was it a survey?
Yeah, there was, one of the surveys has, has lines on it, elevation.
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Platten, yeah, we'll bring that up just shortly.
Okay. 549 is rather, is a little flatter, you know, the sites change and become much more hilly as we go north.
It's this one, it's the second survey document that's in the packet.
Page 38?
39.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, we're also bringing up an aerial that we have with the topo from Hennepin County.
Okay.
On it. The survey will be significantly more accurate, it does show good representation with the vegetation on the aerial that would add some additional context that we'll have for you shortly as well.
Question for you, staff. In terms of the nature of the request, which is, you know, I guess, I would think, I think of it as, you know, they're looking for a variance without a building, so they're really looking to, for a variance on a building envelope or building pad. Is that something we've done in the past, to the best of your knowledge, at the city level?
Chair Cameron, to my knowledge, and looking back through the past cases that were presented in the packet, no, we've had building plans.
Okay.
It is a valid application to accept without.
For sure, and I think, you know, yeah, okay. Well...
Chair, I might just add too, you know, I haven't done the research that staff has in past applications. One analogous situation, though, is a subdivision application where we often don't have building plans. The criteria in the subdivision application actually calls us to look at them if they're there. So, yeah, I think staff deemed the application complete. It's obviously something that would be nice to have on one level for a lot of these questions, but I think staff's deemed the application complete.
Okay. So this is the Hennepin County view?
Chair, that is correct.
Okay.
For illustrative purposes, good for discussion this evening.
Right, directionally correct. Anybody else, questions for staff or the applicant, before we pull it into discussion? All right, Commissioners, thoughts?
I'll make some comments.
Sure.
It is without question that this property will require a variance at some point. My first question was, why was 108 feet arrived at? Because when I first looked at the table, I thought perhaps the variance was for 108 feet, and the setback would be 158 feet, which seemed more reasonable if those two numbers had just been flipped. I'm also challenged with this process, and we've already discussed it many times, that it's really difficult, you know, without knowing what the future project could look So, I mean, that's challenging for me. It seems like the process would be better if it came with a proposal for a property that was seeking a variance of 108 feet from the 209. And I, if you go back, what was the, we'd need a certain plan, I just don't like contingency of requiring a plan, I'd rather have the plan in hand first when considering a variance request of this type. So this is challenging for me.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Elg, Commissioner Sieversen.
I would say the same thing, and as I was writing down notes at the very beginning, is it reasonable, is it polite due to the landowner, would it alter the characteristics? And I just don't think I have enough information to answer any of those questions. Because, now, I think you're right, Elg, that there probably will have to be a variance on this property at some point, and you're right, there's, based on where the homes are, the buildable area is so small that you'd have to, you'd have to get a variance. But, now, I think there could be a variance that comes in and says, "I want to tear down the existing home, and I want to use almost the exact same footprint, and it's not going to be that much different, and it might come back a little bit," that I would say that's very reasonable. And they're, they're not going to take down very many trees, and I'm going to use all of the same hardscapes. We've seen those types of applications that have come in before, and we go, "Okay, I can visualize that this is just going to be the same, the same plot, and the same plat, and the same, the house is just going to be different." I think we've also seen where it didn't make sense to do it that way, and you had to grant a variance, and maybe it could go back farther, but it's still, it still makes sense. But altering the characteristics, I can't say yes or no, it would alter the characteristics, maybe the neighbors would be just fine with it in the same space, because there's not going to be any other disruptions. But I just, because I can't visualize it, I think it's, I think it's unreasonable to come in and say, "We want a variance," but we don't know what it's going to be used for, what the building is going to look like, or any additional variances that are going to be needed on this property.
Thank you, Commissioner Sieversen. Commissioner Schwabey, go ahead.
Well, I went over there, I met Mr. Swanson one day, he was out gardening, and I asked if I could walk around, which I did, and he did show me where the stakes were in the ground, where this 108-foot setback would be. And when I stood there and looked over at the Constantino's, what's their name again? Constantino's place, I, all I could see was part of the patio. part of the patio. There are a lot of arbor vida that were placed there. I, but I couldn't see any part of the house except some of the patio that is out in the back. I think you have to have a starting place if you're going to start drawing up plans. And it seems fairly reasonable to me that they are taking where the house is right now and putting it back toward the road by a little over 16 feet. So, to me, they're certainly going out of their way to find a way to make this work, so that they can get to work on a plan, and even get to work and have a sale. Because the house is going to come down, and how does a buyer know, or anyone who wants to spend a lot of time putting together a plan, how do they know what to do if they think that they may be way over at the recorded setback of 260.5 feet? The proposed setback seems very reasonable. That's primarily what we're at here, right?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, the, I believe yes, if I'm understanding your interpretation or your statement correctly.
So the builder, Mr. Hunt, wants to know if he can proceed, knowing that his line is going to be at the 108-foot mark.
That is correct.
Seems like a reasonable request to me. And if I look at, I don't know if this is the point at which I should be going through this, but the primary questions to consider regarding a variance. The first one, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? I think it is. Is it reasonable? I think it's very reasonable. It actually puts the house back at additional 16 feet that the neighbors would not have to look at. Is the plight of the landowner due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landover, landowner? And that's absolutely correct, primarily given the location of the property to the north. Would the variance alter the essential character of the locality? I don't think it would, it would vary it at all, except to put the whole house back 16 feet, which would be a good thing. Economic considerations alone shall not constitute a practicality. I do not think this is just about economics. It is a beautiful piece of property, and to, for anyone to design something that may have to be on a small bottleneck area of the lot would be very difficult, in my opinion. And, so then there's also the shoreline overlay district. Minimum setback, ordinary high watermark be at least 75 feet. That's covered. That's okay. The setback shall not adversely impact views of the shoreline or lake for adjacent neighboring principal structures. Well, it may be for a little bit of that patio, but I stood there and I could not see the house at all. Number C, the reduction of setback requirements is based upon a specific need or circumstance which is unique to the property in question, and it is, and which, if approved, will not set a precedent which is contrary to the intent of the city ordinance. However, any structure built as a result of an issued ordinance shall be considered in determining the proper setback of future construction on adjacent lots. I'm actually not even seeing a problem there. Does anybody see a problem there? Any of the other, okay. Okay, and then here's the part that's not over. D and E. A shoreline impact plan must be submitted and approved as required and set forth in Section 991.19 of the city ordinance. And the conditions of Chapter 905, da-da-da, of city ordinance are considered satisfactory met, and we won't know that until there is a plan. Is that correct?
Chair and Commissioner, so 905 were those criteria you were just reading?
Yeah.
Through, that's the general criteria?
Mm-hmm.
D is the one that staff has suggested, if you did move forward, would need to be a condition, because that's one of the requirements they would need to submit and get approval for that, so the variance would be contingent on that if you went that route.
I could, I would like that. I, well, I personally could see approving it based on D and E being followed through on. Does that make sense? Did I?
Chair and Commissioner, certainly D, yes.
Okay, certainly D. Can I say D and E, just because?
Well, E is the general standards of the, for a variance that you were reading through earlier. Yeah, that's 905 there, on your screen, that you just read through. So, I think if, based on what I heard you said, those 905 criteria for a variance, the applicant has met. That's what I heard you say.
So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm basically in favor of this, as long as D is met.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey.
Very thorough, thank you.
Did it take too long?
No.
No?
No.
It's only eight o'clock. We got four more hours till midnight.
It's a beautiful thing. Let's set a record, shall we? If you go back one slide, just to the other, as I started thinking about whether this variance is reasonable, the flip side would be have somebody draw up a plan that may or may not be what gets built, or a plan that may or may not change the house that's there, and go through the process at a later time. I don't think it's, I actually think it's quite reasonable to have an understanding of what the land holds and what might be available to somebody if they're, if they're looking at building. On a personal note, right, I'm thinking of having an outbuilding, and my question is, should I just pay to design and have a complete structure defined when I have no idea whether it's going to be something that's going to go forward or not? Lot of time, lot of effort, when this would provide somebody with an idea of what's in place. From my standpoint, I'm not sure why they went to 108, but the fact that their proposal includes the red triangles that would basically ensure that the line of sites from the existing, the line of sites to the lake from the existing properties would not be built upon, I think provides a lot of insight into the fact that they are looking at making sure that it meets the comprehensive plan, that it stays in line with the view of the, of the existing neighborhood, and certainly from a variance standpoint, are giving a, not an indication of exactly what's going to go there, but whatever goes there, as long as it, as long as it meets the rest of the requirements of a building permit, would be allowed. So I actually am also, I went out and looked at the site. I don't think you can go any further to the, to the north. There's an unbelievable drop-off there. In south, I think that you're seeing that they're already knocking against that notch that, that is in the property. So I think it's a, one, a reasonable request in terms of a go-forward path, and a reasonable nod to the neighbors in terms of cutting out all of the possible sightlines that, that could be, that could be a consideration.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Loy.
Okay. You know, with all these, like, properties, there's always these challenges, because each one of them is unique. And I guess that's what makes our community unique. This is a lot that has a lot of constraints on it. I, I too have been to the property. I've been seeing it from the lake view. I was also involved with a home very close to that property. I know the time and expense and the dollars involved with drawing up plans to see if something may work, like you were referring to, Commissioner Van Loy. You know, is it the cart before the horse, or the horse before the cart? The proposed variance setback is further back than the home that's been there for 40 years, 100 years, you know, whichever one we're going to say. And the fact that the applicants, they're longtime residents, they're volunteer, volunteering, voluntary, I'm not coming up with the right word, adding their own conditions to the application to preserve those sightlines. I think that is very neighborly. If it goes much further back, I'm very worried how close it's going to get to the setbacks. Right now, we've got a really nice, healthy distance on the north side and the south side to the adjacent properties. So, I do think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan when we look at adjacent properties. Adjacent lakeshore variances that have been granted for legacy homes on the property, I think the variance is reasonable, and I do feel like this site, there is a plight to the lot. It is unique to the property. It is not created by the landowner. And I don't think the variance would, you know, change the character. There's a lot of homes that are a little closer to the lake, if you consider looking even in Gray's Bay or Maxwell Bay, other bays, the homes are much closer to the waterline than we have in Wayzata. I just feel like this is a reasonable variance, and I would be in favor of granting it, with the conditions that, the voluntary restrictions that were offered are part of the variance, and of course, then with part D, making sure we have that lakeshore or shoreline overlay district report attached.
Thank you, Commissioner Van. I'm gonna, you know, I think I, I have a lot of, I think some of the same concerns that Commissioner Elg and Commissioner Severson have. I too think that a variance for this property is like fully, is fully justified, right? But I think, I have too many questions about just granting a blanket variance, because typically with variances, we're going to attach conditions, but we don't know what conditions to attach to that variance. And so it's the sort of the law of unintended consequences that scares me, right? Like, if we, if, if our, if city council goes ahead and grants this, and the, whoever buys the property decides they want to build a structure that maxes out the envelope and put in a permeable driveway so they can maximize hardcover, I mean, there could be a giant house there, taller than, much taller than what's there today, right? Because they're not touching 35 feet currently. So I think, I think that's kind of my hang-up in this, is, you know, the, as, as today, right, as defined today by the current rules, like that buildable area, they would have to clearcut a whole bunch of beautiful trees, right? And so that kind of takes that out of the process, or they'd be back here asking for a variance to, from the tree ordinance, different subject, not going there. But, right, so, for sure, there's some hardships associated with the property. It's what makes it unique, but I think where I go to then is, you know, so now we're just going to allow, give this big, vast space without being able to attach any other conditions to that space, not knowing what's going to get put there. And so that's where I kind of get held up on this.
Can we pull up the plan again, or the site plan, with the red triangles?
This one?
Thank you, yeah.
Right, so like that area, that building area with, within setbacks, right, like that's all hardwoods up there, and not buildable either, right? I mean, it is, but it isn't.
I'm just curious, what, what really could they do in terms of setbacks or anything else that would be a problem for the, for the neighbors? I mean, where, where would the problem come from? So they come up with a house, it may very well be taller. This house only has 10-foot ceilings.
Right, yeah.
So it probably will.
It could, it could be taller. It could be considerably taller.
The further back you go, the higher it goes up on the.
Right, well, if it, if they, you know, if, it could be much taller, it could be closer to the, closer to the side setback, right? They could, kind of like they did up at, on Park Street, where we had that overhang variance, where they built all the way to the sides and then left everything in the back. You know, so there's, I think that's right, that's the, we don't know the answer to those questions, because there's nothing that's been proposed for the site, other than, we want to build a bigger footprint to be able, for somebody to be able to build on, not us, right? So, I think if, my, for sure, I think my thoughts would be different if we, if somebody came and said, hey, we want to build this house here, and this is where we want to build it, and here's why. And, oh, by the way, right, we're, you know, whatever, right? I think that's a different conversation, because now we have something tangible to look at and think about and say, yeah, we agree, or, yeah, I agree, and, but with the condition of X or the condition of Y. I think we lose that ability to do that if we, if we say, here's a variance for this building pad. So now then.
It's just one variance.
Right, but.
It's just how close to the.
But, it's just how close to the water, but then now, what, it allows anybody to come in and do, is, as long as they're compliant with setbacks and building code, they can build whatever they want in that base.
But that's true of any house.
Yeah, it is.
And truly, you know, have you seen Kyle Hunt's home? I can't imagine he would put anything up there. That would be offensive, but, I don't know, I just.
I mean, what's to say that it's his, going to be his home, though? I mean, that's the other thing.
Well, he is a builder.
Understand that the family may decide to sell to someone else. The family may decide, the, the new property owner may not decide not to engage, or may decide to do something else. So I think, to me, that's, the question is that there isn't something to react to. It's only a variance. When, like, what I was thinking is, maybe the variance to keep the existing house footprint is the right thing to do, and tear down the house and build something brand-new on that same footprint, and we might not even need that additional 16-foot setback. But I think that's where I'm getting hung up. And I get that the plight of the landowner is unique to them, and that's what makes this property unique, but, that is the process. When you have a home, and you have a property, you build the building plans, and then you come and get those plans approved, and that's just what I think any buyer or any person would expect to do, versus asking for a variance first and then going back and making the changes later. That's the process. The process is you build, you design the home, you get the variance if you need it, and then you move forward, versus the other way around. In my opinion. Now, you can disagree, that's fine, that's.
Yeah, I guess I would disagree on that, because being an architect, it'd be hard just to design a house not knowing where it's sitting on the lot. Sometimes with lots, with some restrictions like this, you can be very creative, and so just to come up with a house plan that you found in magazines, saying, I'm going to set this on the lot. That's really something, you know, that you can't do in this instance. I was going to ask staff, did I see something in your, or in the application about a height restriction or height considerations as well?
Commissioner and Chair, but we certainly can address your question. I, I think Director Sharp wanted to make a comment before we got too far away from, from the chain of discussion here a moment ago.
So, to facilitate the commission's discussion here, just as you are discussing particular house plans, traditionally, when adopting or moving forward with a variance application, the house plans presented are not part of the recorded materials, nor are they a condition of approval. So, when granting traditional variances for a setback variance, let's say from a side setback, where 10 is required and they want to go to 8, the house plans and what they are planning on doing with that don't reside with that house. Any future house, 100 years down the line, as I've stated as part of the presentation, the variance runs with the land, not with the property owner, not with a set of plans, unless for some reason those plans were a condition of approval. Traditionally, those plans are not a full condition of approval. Generally, a plan like this would be, where voluntary additional areas, and a plan would be attached to a resolution as an exhibit to show those voluntary areas, or to show something additional that would be added as a condition. There are conditions that are added, such as what Commissioner Planton is referring to on, let's say, overall height, for instance. If you can relate the overall height of a structure, which 35-foot is permitted within this R1A zone, the commission could place conditions to further reduce said height, to try to mitigate visual impacts. The difficulty the commission is facing with this is, how would that impact with a particular house plan? And we return back to that. And we return back to that discussion that I'm not attempting to facilitate the discussion within, but do want to make sure the commission's aware of. In my years, I've, unless there's something very unique about an individual house plan that is causing an individual variance, those are not a recorded document.
And Chair, if I can just elaborate on that, you know, the problem with tying a variance to a specific house plan is that over time, you know, the variance will run with the land and the house has a certain life and when it goes, they'll, they'll, the new builder will need to know whatever setback is. So what you're deciding now is not just for what will be built after the existing house is gone, if that happens, it's, you know, indefinitely until a different setback rule is in place or a different variance is granted.
So just a clarification that, that is a sidebar at best. So if they, if someone has included a plan with a variance request, do they have an opportunity to change the plan? Can they, can they, because, because ultimately the variance goes with the land?
Commissioner, Chair Cameron, Commissioner Van Light, the plans would be supplemental for the commission's review at the time of variance, would be able to change subject to any conditions of any granted variance. So to answer your question, yes, they would be able to alter, but only subject to conditions added.
How enforceable are these red areas that are being, I guess, self-regulated at this point?
Yes, Chair and Commissioner, I'm glad you asked about that. I think if your findings include the significance of those red areas and you would want to make that a condition of approval, we would do all we could to make sure that they were legally binding in the best way possible. So I would consult with my real estate team about the best way for, for recording that, but we would ensure that that would be an enforceable restriction. And it, and only based on the fact that the applicant is offering that. We, we don't require that under code as far as I understand, staff, right? So it's just something they're offering up voluntary, voluntarily, which we would want to make binding if it is, if it does factor into your recommendation.
To supplement that, Commissioner, likely the graphic along with legal description of those areas would need to be developed rather than required at this time, not knowing whether those are required. We haven't got the legal description, we've got the graphic at this time.
And is that legally binding forever or for how long?
Well, Commissioner and Chair, I mean, that would be the idea, right? Just like the variance would run with the land, this would be, it was a condition of granting this, this variance on the setback, so it would be factored into that, that legal right.
I have another question. It was brought up that there's other communities across the lake that don't have the riparian requirements. Is that something that's ever been considered? Why is that, is that something that would ever be on the table so that this point is sort of moot?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Severson, one of the reasons why staff did to that level of research to identify the number of variances in a timeframe was to specifically evaluate, is it time to look at a code amendment? As staff, I determine, or I've always considered it a best practice and I've done it in multiple different communities, and in fact, bringing forward some changes to code ordinance, or to the ordinance here in Wayzata, that when we run into a regular issue on a subject, variances are either regularly granted for that or plans are having to change on a very regular basis to something that not is supported by the community. Staff would bring that forward as a proposed text amendment, potentially depending on what section it's in, have the planning commission or city council review. In this instance, we have evaluated three properties that fit Item B, so apply directly to the requirements of here. It's not a, I have an incredibly long history of sites. If this were not a, if this were a slam dunk and the commission weren't debating at this time in the evening, I might start considering bringing something like that forward. At this point, there's not a commitment to doing something like that. It's something the, the city could consider changing the ordinance in the future, as with any of our ordinances. Anecdotally, one piece to this, this is out of DNR best practices. Most of the other communities around the lake had this. In fact, communities outside of around Lake Minnetoka had this. I've had this in two different communities. Whether that applied well within those communities or not is up to that community.
Director Sharp, is what you're talking about, the summary that you provided in our packet of the number of variances, shoreline setbacks that pertain to Item B, we've got one, two, three, four, five?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Not all of those apply to Item B. Only those outlined in the blue square pertain to B. Those others pertain to other types of variances.
Thank you.
Commission, Chair, if I may, just, I just want to caution you, we're, we're applying the ordinance as it is today. I think that's just a sidebar discussion about policy for the benefit of staff. But again, we have, this is the rule that we're working with today.
It happens when we tie.
You do?
Chair and Commissioners, well, your charge is to provide the city council with a report and recommendation. We could talk a little bit about procedure, Chair, but we'd go to the slide that we always have, which would be to ask for a motion to direct staff to prepare a draft report and recommendation with the appropriate findings to approve or deny with certain conditions. If, if you cannot resolve a tie vote tonight, the procedural options are to table this to your next meeting where, when you might have everyone present. If we can't do that within the, the rules of the 60-day statute of city action, council will just take it up when they have to to get it done. But our charge is always to see if you can build consensus. I mean, one of the nice things about your proceedings is council members often watch your proceedings, they read the minutes, they know the minority view and the majority view, so they'll, they'll have the benefit of your robust discussion here tonight. So, yeah, I don't know if you have anything else to add there, Director Sharp.
Commissioners, we are not currently up against 120-day clock. There is sufficient time if for some reason things were delayed.
Well, if I may comment, as I stated when I first spoke, that this is challenging. One could suggest that our interpretation of reasonable can be different. And my big stickler, as was obvious, Y 108. But I don't feel that I can, I mean, what's reasonable to you is maybe different as to what's reasonable to me. So I'm not going to stand, stand in the way here because there's undoubtedly going to need to be a variance on this piece of property when something is built. So why not get something in place now? I wish it was 150, but it's not, and it's 108. And I can live with that. It seemed consistent with all those other yellow lines along that entire shoreline to me. So it doesn't seem really unreasonable. It just struck me as Y 108, that's all.
Yeah, I, I agree. One of my, one of my questions was Y 108. But on the other hand, when I'm thinking about reasonableness, if I were in the Swanson shoes, I probably would have put it on the existing, on the existing footprint as opposed to backing it off 16, 18 feet, whatever, whatever the, whatever the math was. So from that standpoint, I thought it was quite reasonable. I also think the, it was very enlightening to me when I was talking to them about the fact that if there was, if Kyle Hunt reached into his bag of tricks and said, this is the house I'm going to put on that, we would have argued a little bit about that house, but that doesn't mean that's the house that would actually be built.
100%.
So from my standpoint, is it, is it a reasonable request to back off 10 or 15 feet, whatever that number was? With, with the added restriction that these folks brought forward saying that they are not going to impede at all on their neighbor's land of sight in order to provide a bill, a buildable spot, I, I, I think that's very reasonable.
Well, if I interpreted your comments correctly, do we have a consensus then?
I'd be willing to make a motion or.
You want it?
I can make a motion and.
Sure.
See. Make a motion of recommendation, recommending to staff to prepare a draft planning commission report and recommendation with appropriate findings and I'd say the following conditions. One, of course, is Part D, submitting a shoreline impact plan. And then I think what we'd have to do is define those.
Red triangles.
Areas, I don't know what else to call them.
Pizza slices?
Red triangles of, that have been established for application, review, and adoption at the next planning commission meeting.
I second.
Perfect. Discussion?
Chair, I would just note for the record, your discussion you've had, you have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, so as we just discuss it and you go call for the vote, Commissioner Planton, I, I understood that and I think those, those red triangles would need to be legally defined and delineated and be part of the, the approval of the setback variance would run with the land. And I, I think, I don't know that I heard you say it, but I think the implication was a recommendation of approval. Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
And can the city prepare those, whatever needs to be done to these triangles to make them just so, so we know exactly?
Yes, Chair and Commissioner, we would, we would work on making sure that was part of the final resolution that council would consider.
Cool. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Nay. The motion passes.
Can I make a comment? Can I make a comment? I, I did vote aye because I, you know, think it's, you know, your definition of reasonable, but I, I want to have it in the record that I think, you know, city council should consider whether or not it is, they believe the setback is reasonable. And to, you know, it makes me a little nervous, I, you know, even though I voted aye, I just, it still concerns me about the fact that we don't know exactly what's going to be going on that, we don't know who's going to be building it or buying it, so I'd like that on the record.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Severson. The motion passes and.
Chair, I think we made a note that, that was five.
Five to one.
Five to one with the nay at the chair, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Five to one with the nay at the chair. The motion is, passes, and the draft report and recommendation of approval will be on the consent agenda at our next meeting. And after that, go to city council for their consideration. Thank you, Mr. Swanson, Mr. Christopher. I'm, I'm, I've forgotten your last name, but I got your first name. Mr. Hunt, thank you all and all of you for coming tonight. Appreciate your, your time and your thought to this process and your care for the community. Definitely, so. All right, so that concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting. Next on our agenda is other items. Director Sharp.
Thank you, Chair. So as the commission is aware, we've had several meetings that have been canceled. We do have some additional applications that are coming forward. Excel Energy has resubmitted their application. Those materials are available on the website, the commission has been made aware of that. They are, without wanting to discuss or provide any additional details of that, I would encourage the commission to go and take a look. We will provide our staff report similar to this with additional details and further explanation and context. There are a number of projects that are still in kind of a proposed state. 200 Lake is working with staff right now to potentially develop further applications for grant cleanup on that, so I would expect that that project not occur still in 2025. The other items.
You said, you said that was 200 Lake, so that's the, the old TCF building? Is that them?
Chair, Commissioner, that is correct.
Thank you.
The other projects are coming to a wrap-up as the season ends. 641 Lake, as you've seen, the sidewalk has been open, but they are getting structural up. TCF, well, I'm sorry, Wells Fargo, I'm mixing up my banks already. Wells Fargo project is starting to bring in some of their large rule, or larger structural steel and panelized systems, so you may see that buttoned up, but that one likely will not be completed in the 2025 build season. They will likely switch to interior work once they're no longer able to work. We do have an Item B as well that I can go on to.
The planning commission meeting schedule for 2026?
Yep, and I can elaborate on that if you'd like, or if we've got additional questions on development activities, happy to.
No, the, the proposed schedule for 2026 at the city level is available. It is still proposed and not official.
So because it, dates are still being worked out, two things with the schedule that I wanted to bring up. First, there are some training opportunities that I want to bring, make available for the planning commission. We can try to determine from you, and I'd like you to contact me individually, whether you're interested in attending in-person trainings. There's also additional published materials that I've provided to past planning commissions that I've worked with. They are rather dry, but they're very, very good for looking up what is a conditional use permit, what is a variance. These are endorsed by the National American Planning Association, so if commissioners are interested in that, please reach out, send me an email, feel free to let me know here. I can send you details on that booklet as well. It would be good nighttime reading, but it's not going to be a page-turner for you. It is also very broad in nature.
You're a little geeky about, about planning.
Yeah, I do, I get, I can geek out on it. But what I will say on it is it is meant for a wide array of communities, so you will see aspects of it that are less applicable to Wayzata. So just be aware of that. There are also some training opportunities, we have some additional budget. So I'd like to know your schedules, we have some additional budget piece for the 2025 year, because I wasn't here for the full duration, we had some vacancies in addition to me, so I'd like to be able to utilize that for those who are available. We would then look into if there is interest, whether there are remaining items for this year or the items we can pre-book for early and into next year. For the schedule, because those dates are in flux, the clerk was relatively hesitant for me to share the actual dates until those become public because they have a, the nature of getting out and starting to become the real dates before city council has fully decided on them. With that, the big item discussion that I wanted to bring up, and again, I'd like commissioners to reach out to me individually, or if you have a larger consensus here, feel free to make comments on, is the way that the current schedule aligns is that we have predominantly planning commission on one Monday night and city council immediately following that. Many communities have that on off weeks, that requires staff to have a night meeting every week. So there are benefits to having back-to-back meetings and there are benefits to having them in off weeks. I am open to consideration, this may be the first our city attorney's hearing, that is what I'm realizing, so I may want to consider his schedule as well in this, but I would very much welcome whether we switch weeks to off weeks in the discussion for 2026. If it doesn't happen in 2026, consider it as we're going through that 2026 schedule. Some of the benefits to having it back-to-back, I would say, is that it does keep all the meetings for staff, it keeps with a consistent schedule that the commission has been used to for many, many years. Some of the negatives is that staff is also trying to get both packets out in the same week. And when we have significant items all concurring at once, we oftentimes have to focus on getting one out or the other. And oftentimes, the planning commission packet comes out a little bit later. And I've seen that in my tenure here, where the planning commission packet comes out sometimes on Friday or a little bit more delayed, and we'd like to get it out a little sooner. But we've got to get both packets out and ultimately, the city council packet oftentimes will grab our attention for certain spans of time until we solve the next item and can get back to the planning commission packet. So even if it comes out as a, this doesn't work for 2026, I wanted it in the planning commission's thought process for, okay, let's look at a full year. it in the planning commission's thought process for, okay, let's look at a full year. Let's see how that's worked, and let's make a consideration for 2027. So either way, please provide comments, reach out, see how things work. If you have initial thoughts or comments to either of those, I would welcome any of this evening as well.
It sounds like it's more your call.
Oh, it's certainly within my purview. I think that it would disrupt-
Because we'd be going second and fourth. Is that why? You're saying we'd be going to second and fourth weeks?
Yes.
And second, first, and third. Okay.
That may impact, I mean, planning commissioners that sign up for three years may put these on their calendar for three years. So, I mean, this is an impact to your schedules as well. It's within my purview, but certainly not something that I could do without consideration of how that affects your ability to attend, how that affects our video crew's ability to attend, how that affects our city attorney, et cetera. So I'm just trying to ascertain initial thoughts and comments.
And is this a discussion or you want them-
They are welcome to, but I also do not want to force initial comments when you don't have any yet. You haven't been able to consider it.
My comment would be, I don't know that I have a preference around first and third or second and fourth. So I hear what you're saying about, I think there's pros and cons to both, right? Because now you're going to be, it's at the staff level, you're going to have to be here one night every week instead of two nights one week and no nights the next week. So, but at the personal level, I don't have a preference.
I would defer to staff as well.
I don't really have a preference either, although I'm realizing I'm along for the city council tomorrow night, and I really don't like the nights back-to-back. So if it was every other, you know, the alternate week, I'd be happier.
And just to completely paint the picture, I'm exactly opposite of him. I'd much rather have the back-to-back meetings and the non-. So there you go.
Rip the bandaid off.
That opinion and about three bucks would get you a Starbucks coffee.
Yeah.
But Chair, I've gotten nothing additional.
I was going to make a comment. Commissioner Severson, I was glad that you brought up your point at the end because I think sometimes, even though city council or the community might view what we're saying or read the minutes, I think it's good because when you do have a five to one, it looks like everybody was aligned except our chair. And I think having those comments is very helpful. So I'm glad that, yeah, that you brought that up.
Yeah, and I mean, since we're discussing, we're still in session, we're still have a quorum, I think, like I said, right? I firmly believe there needs to be a variance on that property. I'm just not sure that this is the right one, and I think that's my hesitation. I would fully support finding a way to build somewhere close to or, you know, like where that house is currently situated, because somebody's going to come in and tear it down. Nobody's going to pay that much money for a lot and want to live in a house that's 100 years old.
Right.
Totally understand.
Yeah, and Commissioner, your point about reasonable, it means something different to all of us. I totally get that. Really good points to consider.
In fact, I thought the comment was reasonable, just in case.
That's a reasonable comment as well.
Very reasonable, very reasonable.
Cool. Anything else for the record?
So you don't have a meeting next, in two weeks.
Yeah, when is our next meeting?
We do have a meeting-
Oh, we do.
Oh, because we'll have this on the consent agenda.
Three weeks, because it's not Labor Day.
It's a Labor Day.
It would actually, September is second and fourth anyway, right?
Well, no.
No? Oh, because it's five Wednesday or five Mondays. Yeah, okay.
September looks, correct me if I'm wrong, eight and nine, or eight for planning commission and 22 for planning.
Cool. Right?
And we would have items for both.
We will have items for both.
Okay.
It's fine I'm being here. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Luyt. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Alg. Further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes, and the August 18, 2025 meeting of the Wazetta Planning Commission is adjourned.
May I make-